At this time, as our public input on agenda and non-agenda items, I welcome any members of the audience to speak at this time. Just step up to the mic. Great, at this time, non-action items charter school public hearing, Mr. Carmelo.
Thank you. Kip Capitol Region Public Charter School, an educational corporation that both operate more than one charter school, has requested the following charter revision. The Kip Troy Prep Charter School, which is located on 2 Polk Street and 3,055 Sixth Avenue in Troy, at two locations, chartered to serve currently 743 students in grade K through 12. They are growing to almost double, 1358 students in grades K through 12 by 2028, 2029. Finally, in the current term. Any change to a charter like that will require a have a hearing, is where we host the city. The interesting part is, the school is requesting a charter revision to relocate its high school to a new facility in Albany. So, I think that'll end up actually being a good thing for us. You'll hear tonight, when we go through the budget hearing, about all the great things going on in the district, and all the absolutely fantastic things that Troy High School has to offer. So, I've always said it, and continue to say, if you have a son or daughter in Troy, the best place for them to get educated is here in the Troy School District. And now that the kids at the high school level have to travel to Albany, I'm hoping that we will get some of them back. This is the required hearing. I don't know if there's anybody here for this hearing? Close it up, thank you.
Before we go into the budget hearing, we were going to do, we went to do John's, Bud, John and Adam's budget presentation, and parents were asking about who was running, and we don't have a meet the candidate tonight. So, it's been requested that I just introduce the three candidates that are running. They're not, there's only one here, which is Ebony. Come on, I'll let her lead. So, our first candidate is Nathaniel Wooten. Mr. Wooten is seeking his first term as a district board member. He has an associate of applied science degree for golf course management from SUNY Delhi, as well as a bachelor professional studies degree from SUNY. Over the past five years, Mr. Wooten has served on the Board Citizen Advisory Committee during budget planning. After a 20-year career at Hartford and Chirps Company, Mr. Wooten is now a contract consultant with the Monfro Project Supporting KPMG. He served as a Cub Scout and Den Leader for four years. Also volunteers occasionally with his daughter's Girl Scout troop. Mr. Wooten enjoys spending time with his three children, who have attended school 14, Troy Middle School and Troy High School. Our next one is Ebony Poppet Conway. Our incumbent Ebony, a proud Troy High graduate, is seeking reelection to the Board of Education, where she currently is serving as vice president and serves on the Policy Committee. She holds both bachelor's and master's degree from Ross of Sage, where she has currently served on the Board of Trustees. Ebony brings over 25 years of experience at Kipan, where she is a senior strategic program manager. She also is a member of the School 14 PTO. Ebony and her husband Whitney Conway have two children who attend Troy schools. Mason, who attends the middle school, and Madison will attend School 14. The next one is Davina Mayo Dunham. Davina is a graduate of Troy High. She attended Sienna College for her bachelor's degree, and the College of St. Rose earning her master's degree in social work. Ms. Mayo Dunham is currently the Assistant Vice President of Mission and Director of the
Abiada.
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 I'm Italian, I'm gonna pronounce that. Center at Sienna, as well as serving as an adjunct professor. Ms. Mayo Dunham previously worked as a school social worker for the Troy City School District and the New York State Office of Children and Family Services. Serves on a number of committees such as Student Retention, Academic Success, Presidential Action Committee on Diversity and Inclusion, MLK Lecture Series, and the Mental Health Gas Course. Candidates are running for three open seats on the Board of Education. The vote is May 20th. Good luck. At this time, Mr. Carmelo will be doing his budget show.
Okay, thank you. So, Adam and I have been to a couple of parent groups already. We have three or four next week as well. So, this is our official budget hearing for the 2526 adopted budget. Start all the budget presentations same way, with the mission statement that the Troy City School District will provide a strong educational and social foundation to graduate all students college year ready. It's what's at the forefront of our minds when we're making all decisions, but certainly, and most importantly, when we're making budget decisions. So, we can make that a reality for every student. Same slides I've had, we continue to be proud of all that's happening throughout the district. These are the things about student achievement. You'll see a slide later, when I do a lot of branding about outside of the school, classroom kind of accomplishments, both equally important. Our proficiency rates on the grade improvement rate, ELA and math assessments continue to rise well above the pre-pandemic rates. That was certainly not just here across New York State and across the country. Some, a drop in scores in achievement in schooling from the pandemic. We've reached back up and surpassed where we were. We met district goal number one, district goal number one, just as a reminder, is about each individual student getting better. So, the student scores are one, we're trying to get that student to move up to a two, three, and four. Students that score twos will move to threes and fours. And we're trying to get 20% each year of those students in those categories to move up. And we met that goal this past year. Five of our six schools have their highest recorded math proficiency rate. That's the six schools that face the three through eight assessments. Three out of our six have double-digit math increases. Carroll Hill School, where we were on Monday, they were the only school that increased in both ELA and math. School 16 continues to outperform the state proficiency rate in both ELA and math. And School 2, after nine or 10 years, lost back of being identified as a receivership school, which is the highest form of need according to the state assessments and the state accountabilities, was removed last year for their achievement. So, that was really great. So, all stuff we're proud of. That's not everything, obviously. There's a lot of other things that we're proud of, but that's just a quick highlight and snapshot. We're committed to continuous growth and improvement, always striving to get better. This is a district that lives by that. So, if something goes wrong, we're trying to look at the data, we're trying to figure out what happened, what went wrong, and try to make it better. When things go right, we continue to look at it and say, okay, now what do we do to make it even better than ours? We're always, always, always. And you'll hear about it a little bit. We're always trying to add new things, we're always trying to make things better for the students here in Troy. We've developed a budget that will allow us to meet the needs of all of our students, help to ensure that each one has the necessary tools to succeed. And you'll hear this a few times, we plan for the future. We'll continue to be conservative and strategic with our choices. There's our proposed budget, 14236820. The Board approved that back at April 22nd. It was later than usual, and it was later than usual because the state is later than usual. But it's a number that we're happy with and proud of, and we'll go through the details here. It's been a difficult budget development process, and people in this room know that already. Extremely late state budget, still, still to this day. It's May 7th today. We still don't have the state aid run. And that's what we need, we need to know. You know, Governor Hopeless is out there, she's saying things, she's saying things that are been agreed to. But until we see that sheet that has the actual numbers on it, we won't know. We do know that our projection was to receive the minimum foundation aid increase, which was 2%. Right, so across the state, there were districts that, you know, there's a whole formula, as you know, and that formula is being updated, which is coming up in a minute. But that formula determines what the state aid is. And some are getting even around this area of 6%, 7%, 8%, 9%. Anybody that was projected by the formula to be less than 2% was bumped to 2%. 2% is not enough for us. Districts like ours that were 65% depending on state aid, we get 65% of our revenues from state aid. And that's a lot. When we get the minimum, that hurts us, and you know what it did to us. That draft one had a $4 million budget gap that we had to try to navigate. And we had, but it was not easy. And then the future state aid is uncertain and unknown. There's a new formula, we think it's coming next year or the year after. We have no idea, again, the talk is that districts like ours with high-need kids, high-need area, will get our fair share of money. But we'll see if it happens in reality, because that was also the talk before this year's governor's budget was released. Despite all of this, we're proud we'd still be able to develop a budget as fiscally responsible and educationally sound. So, the last two nights, again, we were at Carroll Hill on Monday, we were at the Middle School Booster Club yesterday. And this is a slide I spent a lot of time on, it's one that I'm really proud of. I think the Board's really proud of it. If you look at that right-hand box, that purple box, the last nine budget cycles, we're talking about a total of 5% total level increase. With five zeros on there, the last four years, we've had a 0% increase. So, that's been really, really great. We've been happy to do it, and I think our taxpayers have been happy to get it. Each year, we said, we don't know how long this can last, and this is the year that it can't last. As I said, with that 2% of the state aid, the $4 million gap, we needed some, we needed to go to the taxpayers for some relief. So, 1.75% is where we landed. Our tax cap, if you look at the third line down, is 2.57%. We could have gone that high without needing a supermajority. We had some conversations here over two or three meetings, talked about 2%, and then decided a little bit lower than 2% was the right number, 1.75%. A good balance of giving us some revenue, that gives us about $660,000 in revenue to help close that $4 million gap. And, but at the same time, hopefully low enough and palatable enough that our taxpayers are good with. Five and a quarter, $5.25 a month on average for the average. So, I think it's a good number. You'll see in a minute, we're maintaining all the great things we have going on in the district. And so, for that amount of money, I think, I think, hopefully, we're in a good spot. While we've been under the tax cap for the last 13 years, again, always keeping the overburdened taxpayers in our mind. And conservative and strategic with our choices, I said that a couple slides ago. So, that $4 million gap, besides the 1.75% that we get from the taxpayers, we had to cut some money on that budget for sure. So, we did it, and the goal right from the beginning, and for the Cabinet and the Board, was to not have to lay anybody off, not give anybody a, what we used to have as pink slips, and tell people they're laid off because of the budget. So, we are not doing that. But we do have, and it's written here, I think it's eight positions that we have, are not filling through attrition. So, we have five elementary positions that people have retired, or resigned, or left for whatever reason. We have a nurse position where they left, and the nurse one was an easy one, because she was the nurse at Sacred Heart and Susan Odell, and both those schools are closing. So, that's one where we saved that whole salary, the whole thing, without worrying about it. And then we had an instructional coach, so every elementary school and the middle school each had two instructional coaches. Two of the elementary schools shared a third one. That third one, I mean, she's not necessarily the third one, but one in those two buildings left us about a month and a half ago, and so, we didn't fill that one. Again, it's a kind of a simple attrition to say, all right, now everybody has two. It was, we needed it at the time, but we're gonna be able to do without it. So, every position where someone leaves, we will do a full review and see if we need to replace them. Some, I used the example the last two nights, we only have one physics teacher in the district. So, if the physics teacher leaves, we have to replace the physics teacher. But as other people leave, if we can figure out a way to do without that position, without hurting kids, then we will certainly do that. Besides the attrition, we found a way to fund three social workers. And we did that by taking them out of the general fund and using one of our special ed grants for this year to pay them. That's not a long-term solution, because there are other things that are in that grant. And we were able to use some carryover money. When you don't use all the money in one year, you can carry over some of it for the following year. So, we're using some of that money to fund three of our social workers. So, as far as the general fund goes, it's almost like they're not in there anymore, so we're seeing. So, all of that, the attrition of using those grants, was about a 1, almost $1.3 million savings, 1.27%. That would the $600,000, cut that $4 million just about in half. And then, as you know from our conversations for the last two months, we're using reserves and some additional fund balance to fund the rest. Again, really fiscally responsible, and at the same time, trying to make sure we're not cutting too much so that our kids can still be successful. And that's this part, educationally sound. So, we want to be fiscally responsible, we want to make sure we always got the taxpayers in mind. But we also want to make sure our kids are doing their best. We want to make sure that they get everything they need to be successful. That goes back to the mission statement from the first slide. And this budget maintains all of those things right there. Quality instructional programs, that's the teaching and learning that's going on every single day in all the classrooms throughout the district, in every single building. That's about the state assessable results that I showed you in the beginning. That's about our graduation rates. I was talking to Mr. Monk just this week. Our graduates can compete with any graduates in New York State. We've got graduates, full ride to MIT, Cornell graduate, RPI. One of the Booster Club ladies said Stanford, is that Stanford?
Lashley.
Lashley, it's Lashley. But, I mean, our instructional programs are as good as anybody in the area. Small class sizes, so even with the five attrition ones that I just talked about, we're still at 17 average class size at the elementary level. That's really incredible, I thank the Board. Every time we talk about this, it's really, really great. And there are many districts in our area at the elementary level that have 28, 29, 30 kids in the class. Amy Frazier, last night, at the Booster Club, talked about, when I was superintendent, she said she had 30 kids in her class over at School 16, and I walked in and she said I split the class up the next day, so it was pretty nice of me, but but it's not that long ago in this district that we were looking at class sizes like that. It makes a huge difference, I mean, I think that's pretty obvious and goes without saying. To have 17, and some of those still have co-teachers, the individual and targeted support that those kids are getting is remarkable, and it's really done impact me. Crucial support services for our students, including social emotional supports and special ed supports for kids who need academic assistance. Again, the small class sizes maintained, the critical supports maintained, our advanced placement college and high school classes. So, we have 26 different classes at the high school that lead to college credits. Seven of them are EP classes, and 19 are for college credit at Hudson Valley or U Albany for the majority of them. And going back to my, one of my first slides, it said we're always looking to get better. Mr. Monk has put in for four additional ones for next year. Let's see if I can remember Mr. Monk. For physics, criminal justice, of the two you said were not as sure, right? The other two are journalism and Tell us, art and design. Art and design. So, again, we had 26 already. Our college and high school program, I keep saying it, is as good as any district in the area, any high school in the area. Which, again, going back to Troy Prep High School, you're not getting anything near the level of college classes that we're getting here. But to have 26, and then have the administration at the high school still trying to edge that, that's, again, what we're about, we're always, always, always trying to get better. Our extracurricular clubs and activities, our Masterminds team is undefeated again. They're going to Atlanta in Memorial Day weekend. Best performer on that team is the number one scorer in the state, Demetrius, what did he say?
Cortos.
Cortos. Really just brilliant kid and really great. It's just like a Quiz Bowl thing, really great at that. Our Odyssey and Mind teams, two for the middle school, one for my team made it to state. Even in extracurricular clubs and activities, we're trying to get better. We have esports, that's relatively new. We have girls flag football, I guess that's in athletics, relatively new. We just are starting a Dungeons and Dragons club, right? That you said, you know, a kid came and asked about it, right? And the teacher said absolutely, and that kid has told administrators that, you know, he loves school for the first time. And we saw that a little bit when the esports school kids were here, right? They felt connected for the first time. And so, the Dungeons and Dragons club was a walking club, it was a dance club. And you gave me a fourth one of those, too. Oh, you're thinking of the two.
I know. Oh, the art competition club.
Really?
Art competition.
Oh, yeah.
They're the actors, the main court.
Yeah.
OVA?
Art Olympics.
Oh, Moctra. So, again, a lot of the things, we have a lot of things, but we're always looking to improve them and keep up. Our elementary after-school program, that's actually grant-funded this year. We're talking about karate, floor hockey, girls, or flag football, lacrosse, and basketball. Five programs, five days a week, in all of our elementary schools. So, every single elementary school in Troy, every day of the week has something going on after school in terms of one of those sports. That's really incredible. You don't find that anywhere, and we're really, really proud of that, all of that to this day. Our athletic programs, we've had some success. Sectional finals in boys soccer, was it boys soccer? Sectional win in boys soccer. Oh, boys swimming, sectional finals. Boys basketball, sectional finals. Last year's softball, sectional finals. Golf had three sectional qualifiers. And girls basketball and boys soccer, a sectional win for the first time in a while. So, really, really great stuff. That switch to the county council has been really great for us. And again, the girls flag football now is a full sanctioned program in the area. We were the first ones in section two to have that two years ago. Thanks to the Board for that support. And our musical art programs. Anastasia was the spring musical, also the fall play. And two years, the last two years, the middle school is also out of musical, which has been really, really highly received. Everybody's really loving that. Our band played down at the Border Regions Holiday Concert down at State Ed Building, in the beautiful building. They all went down during the day and played. And that son had a little solo on the saxophone, really great. Dr. Watz and Mr. Monk, and now we're down there. Really, really proud to see our kids being able to display their talents like that. And there's so many art awards, too many to mention, but I think the displays are up still at the Art Center. K to 12. We just got another email today from the National Academy about an award of arts. I feel like we get one every week about our art kids getting awards for their drawings and paintings and those kinds of things. So, so many great things going on, too many, again, it's not all of them, but just couldn't be prouder of all that. And this budget maintains it all, with a 1.75%, $5 a month to keep all of that stuff that I just said. Hopefully, is the right price. Transfer.
I feel like we should clap for that. That's really good stuff.
You can touch me, Amy, but
Thank you, friends.
Transfer to capital. I think the key to the transfer to capital is the first line and the last line, which are really the same thing. This is budget neutral. This is the corresponding revenue that's coming in one time. When you have one-time revenues, non-recurring revenues, you really can't use them for recurring expenses. It's not real good fiscal practice to do that, because the money doesn't come in the next year. Like, we get $3.6 million a week, have $3.6 million in recurring expenses, next year, that hole is right there. So, this is gonna be done without affecting the taxpayers. This comes from the small city outlet that we've talked about a bunch of times, so don't go into it too much. But a typical capital project, and we're in, we're in the end run of our huge capital project. So many great things from that. We were talking about, it's unbelievable, all this stuff. Started out with building a TCS, having that whole building, purchase it and redo the whole thing for our alternate program. Putting walls in at School 14. School 18, almost a full redo. School 16, almost a full redo. And now, we're at the last stage, which is the tech wing at the high school. If you, when you leave, if you look at the right, the fences are up, they're already starting to dig and get ready to build what's gonna be an incredible piece of, you know, addition to that facility. 21st century technology is just gonna, it's gonna be incredible. We can't wait for it to be done. Those kinds of capital projects, we get about 90% revenue, or 90% aid back on all of them. So, we spend a million, we get about $900,000 back, but that's over 15 years. The small city outlet is a little bit different. Remember, that was a special one that we had to qualify for, and we did. That one gave us our aid back the next year. So, we didn't spend the whole five. We spent a little over four, which means 90%, you know, give or take. We're gonna get an estimated $3.6 million in one-time aid this coming year. So, we're gonna use it as a transfer to capital. It'll do a couple of different things. One will, you've heard us talk about the cost escalation, inflation, and all those things over the last three, four years. That's still kind of in place, so we want to have some wiggle room if some things come in higher in cost than we anticipated. There's some site work that has to go along with that building, as we put in the new tech wing, so we'll use some of it for that. And as we're talking about the new fields, which are great, if you haven't seen it, you should go back there and look. The new softball and baseball fields look incredible. We've heard over and over again about the Pickens Building and the concession and the restrooms when you go to a football game. So, we're looking to, at that possibility as well, using some of the money to upgrade and improve that area. Doing all that, again, no effect to the taxpayers, budget neutral. As the revenue comes in, we'll transfer to capital and be able to use it for those things. What happens if the budget's voted down? This is a slide that really, over the last few years, because we've been at zero, we haven't had to worry too much about it. You have an option of putting in the same or revised budget up for a revote, or adopting a contingency budget. If it goes down twice, you have to adopt a contingency budget. We had one two years in a row, back around 2009. It really, really hurts the district when you're in a contingency budget. It does require a 0% tax increase. So, on its face, some of the taxpayers might think that's a good thing, but it's not. First of all, the $1.2 million cuts that we would have to come up with. So, that would certainly be staff and program, at that point, there'd be no way around it. But also, contingent budgets have restrictions to them. You can't have public use of buildings for non-district events, you know, no visitors using it. We have, you know, buildings are used pretty often during the week, as you know. All of that would have to end. And no purchase of student supplies and equipment. And the big thing there is computers and technology. For those two years that we were on contingency, we couldn't buy us anything. So, the facilities department got really far behind in the things they needed to buy. And our students and staff got really far behind in our computer and technology equipment, because we couldn't purchase anything. So, it's certainly devastating. Hopefully, again, we put together a fiscally responsible, educationally sound budget that people can support. We are committed to continuing our trend of improved student performance and certainly to meet all of our students. And we're back to all of our elementary schools and School 12. The last two years, School 18 was under construction, and then School 16, so they had other places to vote. But now, we're clean, everybody's got their elementary school or school 12. But they're really different, remember, the last couple of years ago, the city of Troy actually changed the district. So, we have ways to get on our website to verify your actually changed the district, so we have ways to get on our website to verify yours. I think we have something you can scan to make sure. Postcards are out, I heard that they came today. So the postcards is something new that we started this year, and our special vote that we had, and we will continue, really, really helpful, I think we're going to get that postcard down, and the iPad's will be onsite, that'd be worth the special vote. Got good feedback on those, too, make it really user-friendly, you can in there and vote and get out. May twentieth, seven thirty to eight, like always, and please come out and vote. Questions? Questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Frimall.
I'll be doing that again Tuesday and Wednesday next week, if anybody's... And I used to come to all of them, not anymore.
You leave all the fun stuff for us.
I know.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, minutes from April ninth and April twenty-second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Superintendent Recommendation Human Resources Staff Matters, unclassified, declassified. Under unclassified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one through seven.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under classified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one and two.
Second.
Discussion. Under discussion, I want to congratulate Barb Paulson, and thank her for all her hard work and dedication to the school district. Under Superintendent Recommendation Programs, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one, two, three.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under Superintendent Recommendation Business Finance, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one and two.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. District Announcements, future board meetings, all meetings will take place here at six o'clock. May twenty-first, board meeting to certify the vote. Please let Patrice know whether you will be in attendance for that, that's like a must.
Is that class night, too?
No. The night after, isn't it?
Class night is twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, the week of...
The whole weekend.
Yeah.
So when's your class day? Like the...
Uh, Thursday, the twenty second.
Oh, so that's the fourth. Yes, sir.
TCS principal presentation, June fourth, retiree and tenure recognition, and then the budget information, which you should all be marking your cameras.
Two and one night, that's it.
Yeah, 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 our idea, one.
Four and two.
Four and two nights, too. So, and now for the good news. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and thanks to our families, students, PTAs and PTOs throughout the district, our teachers are feeling the love. Thank you to all incredible, our incredible educators for your dedication, collaboration, and enthusiasm. Because of you, our students are ready to take on whatever lies ahead for them. Troy High Senior, Troy High School senior Anna Guina was this year's recipient of the Colony Art League Scholarship, a five-hundred-dollar award given to a student based on academic performance, artistic talent, ability, and commitment to continue their studies at the collegiate level. The award was presented by former Troy High School teacher, Mary Ann Brander, who chairs the Art League Scholarship Committee. Congratulations, Hannah. Students in Carroll Hill, my brother's keeper club, recently visits, visited City Hall and had the opportunity to learn about civic duty toward City Hall, working alongside our city government, including Mayor Mantella. Thank you to the mayor for hosting our students and providing this opportunity to be engaged in our community. I'm just glad that a mayor that knows where we are. Anything else?
And today's also National Schools Nurse Day, too. Just want to, you know, put that out there.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I forgot that. I'm sure my door, you should remind me.
I know, yeah.
And the boy. Is there anything from the audience, or you guys just want to get out?
I have one quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
So obviously, there's a lot going on with federal level, our dedication, and a lot of stuff is trickling down to the state level, schools and funding for education, pro city school district is, you know, maybe not relevant to this budget, although, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen anywhere. How is the district preparing for the possibility that less funds are going to be coming down through state aid grants? What programs are you looking at, like, hey, that's what's going to go, this is what we're going to have to go, or is this how we're going to have funds?
Yeah.
It seems to be happening fast.
Yeah, yeah, so that's really what this whole development process has been, it hasn't happened yet. We got, we got an email about a month ago on a small grant, it was only like twenty-five thousand dollars, and it said the federal government might be taking that away. But we have some big ones, so we have the Stronger Connections one that I was talking about for our elementary after-school program, and hundreds and hundreds of kids getting mentored after school through that, that's a few million dollars. We're hoping, how we're dealing with it, we're sweating and staying up at night, but we're hoping that the things that have already been approved are not going to be pulled back. They haven't been yet, I know there's a lot of talk about it, but the things that we've had promised to us have still come in. But that's where that first slide, where we said we're being cautious and conservative and strategic with our choices, we're trying to make sure that we're not adding things that we won't be able to maintain. So we're going to be conservative and strategic until we really hear what the final answer will be. Good question.
Good side hope. If there's nothing else, motion on the floor to adjourn? All those in favor? Good night, everybody, have a good night.